Good morning, welcome everyone. Today is July the first, 2021. It's nine o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners for Order. Please rise and proceed.
I would like to leave this to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thanks everyone for attending. We'll move on to item three. Any citizens desiring to be heard? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to item four. Meeting with the county officers regarding estimate needs for fiscal year 2122. Today, we start our new fiscal year on July 1st. So this is kind of a... One of the agenda topics that we do every year at this time. So with that, we'll start with the District Attorney's office, ma'am.
Our budget is unchanged from last year and really contains just low salary, part of his salary, and our legal needs, which some years we don't get anywhere near that amount and other years we do.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any discussion to the board?
As long as you keep low, I'm happy.
Yes, I agree.
Us too.
It was a great asset.
We all agree on that. Laura, there's one other thing that I'd like to bring to your attention while you're here. We are working on opening up new space across the street from the sheriff's office and the detention center for officers of the court to meet. So I know we've got a lot of... We are out of space here and so we're making... Our board is making steps... Taking steps to open up a couple more offices and meeting areas and over. It used to be the drug court folks are moving out and we're opening that up. Our emergency management office is in there as well and so we're going to have more meeting areas over there for officers of the court. So we don't have to stumble over each other in break rooms and things like that anymore. To bring that to your attention. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna leave.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, so... So I guess they were just accepting their estimate needs. There's really no actions on these other than review and some questions. All right. Next in my stack here is the election board.
I did an increase on my third person and also with my part-time. And then I have extra postage because we redistrict this year and we'll be sending out a lot more voter ID cards once we redistrict.
There's a lot more voters in the county now?
There are.
Yes. So you increased because of what?
On my third person, I increased her salary. And then with part-time, we might need part-time help. So I increased it a little bit also.
Okay. So you went from 1,200 in part-time help to 2,000?
Yes.
Okay, I see. Maintenance and operations up a little bit. Understood. Any questions from the board?
None for me.
Good.
None for me.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. All right, county sheriff. Do you want to... Detention Center or Operations?
Uh, so we've got the Operations first, sir.
Pay attention.
On the Operations side, I'm requesting another full-time investigator with rollups and everything. I included that total cost. I'm not sure if that's supposed to be there or not, but just put the total cost, I want to say, with insurance and everything is around 47. And then on the additional furniture maintenance, machines and equipment, I'm asking for a vehicle. Since it's a vehicle, it's not predominantly going to be used for patrol functions, just basically pull the trailer into cleanups and stuff like that. I'm requesting that we buy a vehicle specifically for that.
Is that another capital outlay? Where could I see that?
Yes, towards the bottom.
Okay. That's the 35,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And as far as the outfit costs and stuff like that, we can bear the burden of that for cash and after talk about this. That's it on the Operations side. On the Detention side, we just asked to move to 84,000, 85,000. Two additional thousand dollars for that.
Okay. You said on the jail side, 84,000 to 85,000?
Correct.
We haven't got to the jail yet, but...
Yeah, it's just...
He's ahead, didn't he?
Yeah, it's all right.
All week.
It's another piece of paper under this job. So any questions on the Operations side?
I have no questions on the Sheriff's side.
Molly? No. Okay, thanks, Sheriff. All right, now the jail.
Yeah, we've, for quite some time, we've kept it a flat, 84,000.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just asking for an additional thousand dollars to deal with these things. As the building ages, we're starting to have to invest a lot more money into it. I know one of my goals this year is to have the building paid. It's paid, starting to come off of it.
Right. And we need to keep that side of those brick buildings sealed.
Sealed.
Yes, sir. I got that. Okay. What else?
Is that estimate needs number supposed to be 85?
Do what?
No, that could have been on the slide. And I didn't catch it till...
Good catch, Sheriff. Maybe that's... Eighty-five. Oh, the total.
No, on the... Over here.
Here's estimate needs on the top.
At the top. It says 84 instead of 85.
Okay. Any questions? No questions. Thanks, Sheriff. Anyway, thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate your hard work and your team. All right, court clerk?
I've asked for a small increase to give increases in pay to my staff. It's not a large one.
Let's see.
Less than a thousand?
Yeah. The same on travel expenses?
A little over a thousand.
Yep.
Very frugal, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
None of them.
Okay, thank you, guys. Civil defense.
I left pretty much everything the same. Travel and expenses, I left at a thousand dollars to go to training. I left my MNO the same as 7,000 as the year before. I did put down 3,000 in capital outlay for whatever the office gets redone for new desk and filing cabinets.
Right.
And then I asked for an extra 1,200 in salary.
So I got some questions.
Yes.
Because yours went way down.
That's because whenever I came in, you know, David made way more than me.
Okay.
So...
So there's room for growth for salary pay raises for you. It's what we're looking at here.
Yeah.
We initially started you out at 36.
Yeah.
What the work that you've been doing?
So... Yeah, I'm with you. So maintenance and operations went down as well, about 3,000 dollars. Is there a reason we asked for less there?
On which one?
Maintenance and operations, item two.
Oh, well, I think we transferred some money from the... Oh, I received the 3,000, a little over 3,000 dollars in F-MAG from a fire reimbursement. And then we also had to transfer money from the General Gov. to MNO to pay David Ball whenever he left his comp time.
And that came out of maintenance and operations?
And so the maintenance and operation increased. The 7,000 was what it was. There was some F-MAG reimbursement, so it ups that amount. The salary amount actually has increased a little bit because we did have to transfer money to salaries to pay David out. It was paid out as salary, his payout, not out of maintenance.
And that was from last year's appropriations?
That's why there's the 50,400,000 dollars in net appropriations from last year. All right.
So on the maintenance and operation, what do they pay out of that?
Fuel, supplies that may be necessary.
My cell phone and iPad.
Yeah, that type of stuff.
Standful? I'm good.
Netflix subscription?
No.
All right.
You should...
All right. I appreciate you looking after the budget like that. Any other questions, comments from?
I'm good with it.
Molly?
I'm good.
All right, sir. OSU Extension Center.
I believe our budget increased a little bit. We have hired on a 75% time FCS educator and she is partial 4H and partial FCS here in Logan County. And she is 25% FCS in Noble County. And because we filled that, it looks like from last year, our programming assistant was left off of that budget for last year. And we would like to keep her on, if possible, to help keep the office moving.
Okay, so they've done the same thing. Their estimate needs number at the top is not... They're asking for 99,672, not the 83,172.
99, what?
672.
Add some personnel services?
Yes.
99,672.
Yep.
So how's that?
Wait, 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 wait. Never mind, I'm wrong. Because down here, they put the travel, those with it.
Yeah, they add the travel into it.
Never mind. Sorry about that.
So the 83,172 is correct.
So the increase is actually from the 11,505 to 14,677, right?
111 to 114.
Yeah, that's what it said. So an increase of 3,000 and about 170 bucks.
3,172.
Yes.
To be exact. Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for the extension?
No questions here then.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, Free Fair. So I believe we disapprove of everything from the Free Fair then? No, I'm just kidding.
They did attach a letter that's up in the backside.
All right.
The Free Fair board?
Yeah. Okay, so I guess they'll have to add this up.
Yeah, they don't have a total here.
Total increase is 17248. You know, it's probably not time to bring it up, but I think we need to have a sit-down with maybe the chairman of the Fair Board. I'd like to know the duties of the caretaker at the fairgrounds.
I don't disagree with the Sheriff. I think you're spot on there.
Hey, I've had free dinner yesterday or back today working down there. I just don't think we should have a meeting.
Well, if the county's doing the work on the fairground property where it benefits the Fair Board and no better caretaker, who's not involved in that? We certainly need to talk about that. So there's a plus-up. What'd you get?
17,248.
I got 45,748 dollars plus-up because they asked for 100,000 from 50... They went from capital outlay of 55,000 to 100,000.
That'd be creased.
For a while, sure.
That's what happens. Those zeros are cheap. You rest those zeros long. Not for that, sure. Yeah, we're following the door. So anyway, there's an increase here of 45,748 dollars for the last year. So any questions or other discussions on that? I think that Molly, when we did the approvals or when we talked about the budgets, we approved for the county officers going forward, the county officers and the other county offices. Maybe we should have that discussion with that.
Needs staff.
Okay. Any other comments, Free Fair?
None.
All right, county assessor.
On the sectors, like if the same show the same. On personnel services, we are asking for 132 dollars more on the part-time help. The thousand dollars we asked for last year, we didn't use. So we're only asking for five dollars to hold that open. Travel expense, it was said, right? Maintenance and operation is the same. Capital outlay is the same. On the totals, we're asking for 863 dollars less than last year.
Shoot me right at our pants.
I'll work on that.
What was that one?
Great job, Molly. I'll push you a bit further.
No questions, Sheriff.
On rate out. Our full appraisal sort of stretch really depends. We're asking for another full appraisal. Last year, we transferred 8,000 dollars on maintenance and operation of personnel services. So if you look at that personnel services, that's 270,000 dollars. If you take that 8,000 back out, it'd be 262,040 dollars. Subtract that from the estimate of nature, save us 30,460. We just love it. Would like to say we employed part-time help, 1,500. We didn't use it, so we're just asking for five dollars to hold that open. Travel expense, we used just very little, but we really do need it because last year, a lot of our meetings were on Zoom. This year, they'll go back to in-person. Maintenance and operations, if you add the 8,000 back into it, that was transferred out, it'd be 63,000. We're only asking for 52,000 this year, which is 11,000 less. The reason for that is the software which we use, which is Landmark for massive appraisal, is 11,000 cheaper this year. So we're not asking for that. Capital outlay, five dollars. Contract services, 40,000, all the same. On the totals, we're asking for 17,965 dollars more.
Thank you, Molly. I'll go to your side and thank you a little bit. You have others? Your assistant?
Thank you, Molly.
Any questions?
I'm asking for the standard raise for my first deputy, 100 dollars a month. I asked for a raise for myself since the officers haven't had a raise and the cost of living has gone through the roof. Travel, saying MNO asked for 5,000 more just because the supplies, the cost of supplies have gone up. So the total budget is up 8,600. I've always been really conservative over the last 14 years. And so I asked for a little more this year.
Questions from any other? None for me. None for me. Other than you said you request a raise for your first deputy?
The same for 100 dollars a month. All my other employees are paid out of my fees.
All right.
So...
All right. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, county commissioners. All right. On personnel services, we changed that number down to 2,006 dollars to 2,010 dollars on estimate needs. It has to be raises to employees and such. Travel expense, that's for mechanic commissioners, travel. We didn't miss that by much, so we're going to leave that at 28,000. And then maintenance and operations, we just plugged that with five dollars because we didn't use much last year. Capital outlays, everything's five dollars there. The total increase was from 23,510 dollars to 23,008... Or 238,000 to 235,000. Any questions, comments on the board? This is the second time we've checked this. No, sir. No questions. I don't think General Government. Okay. So we did a little bit of change in round on our General Government numbers. Troy, would you like to go over that? It's kind of nice that you take a special interest in General Government.
So the personnel services, because of the transfer, it shows last year's at 45. We had to do a transfer to pay out some comp time. So to prevent or to try to not have to do a transfer again, we went ahead and increased to 45,000 for personnel. That is for the custodian and that also allows the annual 100 dollar a month raise. There was no change to travel or part-time. Maintenance and operations is the account that pays all the utility bills and phone bills and basic maintenance on the county buildings and the property and liability insurance. It's also one of those accounts that we try because you never... We have so many unexpected expenses through the year. The reflection of 1.2 million for last year is due to the CARES fund reinforcements that went back into that account. The actual budget on that last year, I believe, was 800,000 or 750, maybe it was. Anyway, the request is 850 MNO. That also allows for the slight increase in property and liability insurance that we have. Capital outlay is looked at as a county savings account. It's where we would dip into in the event of something oops or something needed covered. So we had 974,000 in there last year. We're asking for 1.3 million. That's also the account, once all the numbers are in with the budget maker. If you were to walk in and we had some drastic tests to make, that we would look at and have a reduction there. So that's pretty much the request for General Government.
Okay. Also, on the capital outlay, when we went through where we used to keep extra money, where we had a lot of... A lot of leave over at Key World, we reduced those funds and put those in capital outlays. So that one thing we drew in is accumulation of cutting back in other areas where we physically rolled away money that way. So any questions on that?
None for me.
All right, thank you. Insurance, backup retirement and unemployment compensation and employment insurance. Okay. So this is a very large expense for the county. This last year was 2.91 million dollars. 2.191 million dollars. And this year is 2.339 million dollars. Backup retirement and unemployment workers' comp, employee insurance, all directly tied to the number of employees we have. The employee insurance is one of the most expensive things that we do here. We had 1.2 million dollars last year and our estimate needs shows 1.25 million this coming year. We're still at a cap of, what is it, 600 a month per employee? For insurance is what the county pays. I don't see that increasing much year over year for a while. But it is an extra 600 dollars a month that we give back to the employees as a benefit. Just like a ton of part of their commissioners that said before, we don't pay much, but benefits are probably pretty good here in the county as well. Any questions or comments on these numbers?
I don't... I mean, it's true, we didn't have to have the insurance, but we probably have our own companies.
That's not right.
Right. So we can, we can treat our employees like, uh, like, you know, people who wait on tables, right? And not pay them anything and make them work for tips like the insurance. That probably wouldn't work out very well. Okay. Item Q, charities, charity. So, um, uh, this is the same as last year's seven, uh, $1,750, um, that's for?
Indemnity burial.
Yes, okay. Yeah, and normally they don't get buried until they're cremated. Alright. We issued $825 worth of warrants last year for that purpose. Any questions, ma'am? Alright. County audit budget. Can't change that. Explain to me again why it would have so much?
Because the statute requires that each budget year, one tenth of one mil, or of our money is set aside to pay for that year's budget or audit. And the money has to roll and accumulate till they come in to do the audits and we pay it.
Right. So it went from $92,000 to $1,750 because the county assessor did a better job of assessing product.
Well, in, in all honesty, that's number, once the budget numbers are all normalized, it'll be adjusted a little bit.
Right. Okay.
We have no choice on that.
Okay. Okay. Our weekly budget account. Um, so this is like filling, uh, jello at the wall and seeing what sticks. Um, this, you know, um, county clerk talked about that as their account that is the first one to come off the wall. But actually this one is, it's our county budget account where we've asked for $100,000 in each of our road districts for, uh, for road funds, uh, for a total of $300,000. We asked for that last year and, and got that. Um, and this coming year, the, the same thing. We'll see if the budget allows that. Any other comments?
No, sir.
Alright, now to my favorite one. Mechanic clerk?
Yeah, I should have received it, but I didn't. Um, I, I had turnover and I'm actually down a person right now, and because of the salary adjustments, I'll still be able to give raises on my existing funds from what we've had. So, uh, I did not ask for an increase to any of my accounts.
But you're short an employee?
I am down actually two, but, but yeah.
Alright.
So I'm, I'm gonna recycle the same budget dollars and still be able to give the $100 a month raises.
Good job. Keep them down.
And I would point out that as of June the 14th, when the numbers were pulled, my office generated $437,735 in filing fees that go back into general government.
Right. So that's why, I, I really don't want you to be short people.
No.
Because when you're short people, you know, we don't get some stuff done that we need.
We're, we're, we're working in.
Okay. I just.
No, I, I appreciate that. Actually, in, in all honesty, the M and O is where I was looking at the increase. Um, my copies, which I have depended on to pay all of our supply costs since I became clerk, have went from oil boom, massive, to...
Noted.
Yeah, so.
Alright. Last one, county excise equalization board. Would, uh, would you like to talk about your budget?
Uh, I believe it's gonna be the same as last year, uh, not taking any fees. I think it'd be, I think we got a thousand in there for ongoing education. I think I'm the only one who has to have the ongoing education this year, we're trying to find a free one.
Okay. Yeah, the total, uh, total amount, uh, so you had, uh, maintenance and operations for $1,600. What does the excise board need maintenance and operations?
Well, because that's where we throw in the budget copies that they're required, the booklets they're required to buy for some of the town sites and that, and if you'll notice, only 400 was held as reserved. They actually didn't have to use any of it last year.
Yeah, that's why it was, of course, added in the question.
But I would also like to point out that our excise board members are entitled to receive payment for their meetings, and all three have opted to, to propona their, they volunteer their services in the capacity of excise, they do not take any payment.
Alright, we appreciate that. Alright.
Good job, Chris.
Thank you. $2,900 last year and $2,900 this year, held them steady. Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions?
None for me.
Alright. With that, any other questions or comments from the elected officials? Alright. With that, we'll move on to item five, consideration of possible action on financial statement of resale property fund. This is in accordance with Title 68, following financial condition of resale property fund submitted for your consideration. Thank you. Alright. Any, uh, any questions on this? So the action is to accept the, the statement? Alright, accept it. So I move we accept the statement. I'd like a second. Somewhere.
I might book you in.
No.
I'll second Marvin's motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item six, consideration of possible action on resolution of approving monetary compensation for overtime hours in the election board. Is that it? I don't know. Didn't put it on there.
It's not a set fee. All that does is when they have an election that is not state or county, the entity calling the election has to pay the overtime cost to the employees. We're just required to do that annually.
I'll move we approve.
A second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? I, just a brief explanation on the agenda item would help us understand, uh, without trying to read through that whole resolution, but it was kinda confusing. And Furbage on it didn't really go into a lot of that. So all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Alright, item seven, consideration of possible action on resolution establishing Logan County investment policy for FY 2021-22.
Statute just requires that, that these are the different funds that the treasurer has in their possession for placement and investments available.
That this outlines the banks that we use for those, right?
Well, actually, the next item outlines the banks.
Okay. Let me show off those. I have to approve. And these are just, these are always the, the same standard terms for, for that, obviously. I second the motion. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I guess I've got to turn those over here. I make consideration possible action on resolution, resolution designating depository banks for FY 21-22.
All local banks, I guess?
Bank first, interbank, IBC, bank, farmers and merchants, and Oklahoma State Bank, five of them. I'll move we approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. One of the things I, I would ask, uh, along those lines, is, is there a way that we can get, uh, reporters? Or is there something that we look at anyway, and I've forgotten, that tells us, like, monthly, how much, how much funds are in each one of those banks? In the county? I think that would be interesting to, to look at, see where, how we're split across those five financial institutions. Thank you, ma'am. Alright. Item nine, consideration of possible action on resolution accepting donation from the Oklahoma Bar Association to the court, clerk, district court in the amount of $3,000 for courtroom improvements.
I'll move we approve.
I will second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the donation, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 10, consideration of possible action on resolution disposing of equipment for District Two. A twenty, a 2007 overbuilt trailer.
Uh, this was another one that we sold on Purple Wave, uh, had some brake issues on it, just one of the ones that we just didn't use. Uh, real old, did a lot of work, so we've been, had to sold it on Purple Wave.
I move we approve.
I will second, and the only question I got is this number here, $13,750, is that what it sold for, or what you bought?
That's what it was originally bought for, 2007.
Which sold for?
We sold it for 25, I believe.
Not bad. Oh, 25? Oh, 13,750? No. Pressure see?
13,750 was a contract price, yeah, that's right.
Okay. That's what it sold for. Alright. Uh, it was originally 25.
25.
Still. It's better than giving it away.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, item 11, consideration possible action on lease purchase agreement with CEO Boyd, assigns his security state bank for the following equipment for District Three.
I was upgrading, uh, two of my John Deere graders, I'm getting Deere graders longer, get six more years of warranty. Getting a size bigger on one of them, and it's gonna be cheaper monthly by 300 and something dollars.
Those 672 GPs are awesome. Yeah, they'll pull a lot of dirt.
So getting Deere graders for less money.
These are color-coded tabs. Lonnie, you are individually, the yellows, the blues are the board. Well, and that red one there is the board.
Okay. So Lonnie's the yellow tabs and blues and reds are ours?
Yep.
Okay. So I, I move we approve.
A second, please.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Alright, I appreciate you guys.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, so I'm trying to make sure, because I will miss some of these.
Is it green enough there yet?
Still. Y'all running away?
Wayne's thanks.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Lonnie gets to come forward and sign on every tab?
Yes. And there's many little awkward places, it's very hard, I may have missed one or something, but I kinda get it.
Yeah, it's just a lease agreement. So Lonnie, we've got one of those, uh, little devices that are plugged into that grater?
Yes.
When they're throwing codes? If, if there's something that goes haywire, that's not covered under the warranty on your lease purchase, we're able to, to help with some of that.
I appreciate that. Should be fully covered, but.
Yes, sir.
You know, have sometime there's loopholes in it.
Well, the loophole is, is always fully covered as long as you haul it down there to them.
It's supposed to be travel mileage, everything.
So onsite in mud boots and everything?
That's what they say.
Sounds like a nice deal.
Y'all go ahead, Marvin, I'll sign, I can see him signing his air crew.
Okay. Alrighty then. Um, item 12, consideration of possible action to approve application for temporary appropriations for the General Fund and Health Department for FY 21-22.
So half of last year's budget, with the exceptions of workman's comp that we do 100%, so we can pay the bill 100%. Um, general government M and O, which is above 50, to pay the property and liability 100%. The civil attorney money for the DA's office so that they can, our portion for Lowell gets sent, uh, in hold.
Notice you didn't appropriate half of our highway budget. Just saying, just saying. Now, it's on the chopping block like everything else. Alright, uh, need to do this when we pay bills?
I make a motion to approve. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Two signatures, she is.
One again.
Alright, item fifteen, consideration of possible action on FY twenty-one, twenty-two soft court service agreement with Kelp Row for the following departments, County Clerk, District Three, District Two, and Commissioners, Treasurer, Sheriff, District One, and Americans of the Nation. Make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the Kelp Row contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, on the go. Item sixteen, consideration of possible action on consent agenda. I was just looking for some. They didn't have tabs on them. It wasn't my fault, I wasn't there. Right card, I don't know.
Was that the cover card that she started to have?
I'm not on that. She went out of the pack, is what it is. I don't know, it's not really a call pad.
These are to transfer money from last fiscal year to this fiscal year for cash funds.
Alright. Alright, so. This is so many, don't put today over.
Well, so you've got something to spend today.
Why can't?
Can't.
You couldn't talk about Blake Davis out there by Broadway?
Yeah, we can talk about that.
It's not what I should have.
Can I have it, sir?
Yeah. That's not enough.
What was that? I know, that's why I said, he's not.
I did?
Yeah.
I drove by there the other day, I noticed the dust up filling up quite a bit.
Yeah. I've got a guy lined up, if ever drives down, I got a guy lined up to clean up the ditch.
I just wanted to know what kind of catfish are out there in the middle of that hump.
Maybe?
Um, wheat field, used to be a wheat field right next to the Broadway by the railroad tracks over there.
Oh, is there?
There's a, they farm over there. It's quickly becoming light, it's not, it's about a half an hour.
It's not a little bit?
No, there is. It's staying together. There's no tabs on it. Just gotta do it over and do this stuff. That's the state office, it's a professional asset. Like guilt trees. You guys get to sign all these too, right?
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're signing.
Yeah, it's the carryover from.
Oh, yeah.
Moving the cash.
This one year.
Last year, this year, yes.
That's right.
Well, you have to sign them both. Why would I get a sign of course? You have to sign them for us. But you should be on our side. I'm figuring out how to do this without having to sign them all the time. You should be up there dancing on the state auditor desk to manage modernization of this process.
There may be some way out there that we just have to handle that in command.
Oh, that's right, so I just, I'm there to help us find the ways to do this.
Actually, I give these things here.
No, they, we have, we have, but we have to ask permission for.
The problem, we have, we can get the rubber stamp, but no one else is allowed to possess it, but you. Right? So, and you have to apply it yourself, so if it takes longer to actually do that. If I could get a stamp, then I'd all three say in the church. That would be legal, but I could do it like this. That has to be the rule.
Well, we could wear it on a chain around our neck. Be very cool, actually. Sir, be very cool. Yeah, would it be, you know, like in the dying like that, yeah. Like a Mercedes or dying, like that, with some nassle on it. Absolutely would have. Blink, and like that, yeah. What, exactly. I like the one that's. What? So, I'm good at that. I was going, I'm just invited, because I hope to get it. And that, we are having a market, fifty out tomorrow. And y'all invited. Hey, I'm invited, just watch out around. If you're around the area, you can go through the stop by or park. I forgot it's three a.m. in the west side of the other. Party in the dark, stars start shining. I don't have time, working on the. That's a legal notice from the last year's base. That metal beater.
Cash funds.
Quit it.
And then these are like this.
There's more. Do this. I'll remember. Do this. Not just the lazy. Troy, what about, I mean, you'll see the lazy, you through the. I seen the sign. It belongs to the city, the city of. So, you should have. What about a cover sheet? A cover sheet with.
Well, and I can do that for some stuff. The problem is, that's not always in to generate a report that the cover sheet would go to. I'd have to.
Because they don't need a oversight, just like.
Right, we cover sheet for a lot of stuff. I, I'm still trying to find.
Little extra take to run. Got an additional one here. We have absolutely.
Pinch sign.
Need a proxy. What's her?
You missed one.
Well, he was.
We missed two.
Sticking together, that's how. Well, I'm a full lobby on this one. It only affects you.
Oh, yeah.
You just look at them, Lonnie. I just look at them, they say, I'm good, I'm fine, I'm glad, I'm glad. Especially if the short form on. That muscle. Making it good, trying to make sure what's good to get is good. All my, my, I'm sure service needs this. With the original. I have a. Can I have my restricted? Three thousand seven hundred seventy. Not highway, but, oh, okay. Dead line. I was all kinds of, going wood. Yeah, that's not. That's straight, I guess you can't spin it. I don't think so. I'll definitely be answered that question, but we're not here for. Are you, see now, you said it's, it says we can't do that, but we can do this.
Hey, that sounds familiar.
Have you seen my?
Yes, they are.
But those home calls from you, and shipments.
I mean, I got this one before.
Didn't you get one of those?
I did.
I got horse trainers, company of all. They have the safety system.
They do.
I don't change.
How can you tell?
We get. Our response got weak, too, we were trying to. Regardless of what they're listening to. It only gets to do that once a year. You need to go about the show pit? Do you use that for that?
Yeah, I usually do. We, uh.
A bunch of those.
Dozer keeps doing that, it's third time it's done it. Not since I've been here, but. Yeah. And it's not a cheap fix. Because it cheers the bolts inside of it.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. We had that, we, we changed the teeth on that on our five B drink. On both sides of the dozer, we bought it.
Yeah.
That's been a couple of years ago, and it's held up real well. You know, all that white work. But, we're getting into the yellow sheets now. They're real thin. There's a big stack of them. It's been a long time, I have to do things that I forget.
Y'all started shorting it.
Sir?
Say, y'all started shorting it.
I did. These get initials, they don't get a full.
Uh, we're releasing this, oh. Need a place to see if it looks fine?
Uh, we're trying to get.
She like the stamps though.
And. Yeah, I missed the stamp.
Also, I'm ready to hear it.
Does the governing board, who's the governing board, let's have a show, show them?
Yeah, for the purpose of the blanket is the stamp in the center. That other would be if we were using that. That other would be if we were using that in payment.
Too many rules, but still. Just off of it.
Aren't you lucky to have someone who keeps that place?
We just get to entertain the auditors a little bit more if we did.
They need two rooms.
Sir?
They would need two rooms.
Two rooms?
Oh, two rooms, yeah. Oh, it isn't, it's just down there. I've never had security before.
Be kind of nice.
That's right. They must know we're showing up.
Yeah. I recommend you guys start loosening that, be famous, uh, security. Calisthenics, you know, stretching exercises.
You know, I've signed all those blankets, so...
Yeah.
Oh, they don't have to sign those blankets?
We just the white makers.
That's gonna be my next, hopefully, is I can get the blankets. Well, we don't sign them individually. Depending on when we get them in the computer to generate a report.
Do you have to scan one at a time, or can it scan? Can it scan multiple at a time, or you have to be one by one?
The blankets don't, well, they only get scanned upon payment. Not now. KELPRO upgraded software so that we're connected. So, if, if it's a department that uses KELPRO...
They do.
They, they put it in on their end and it shows up. Now, we have a lot of departments that don't, so we still have hand input and print. But I'm hoping to change that this summer too. They have, KELPRO has developed, scaled down their software for departments that don't have a need for the big stuff and really have narrowed it down to just accounting and purchasing. More like for fire departments and that. So, I'm gonna schedule a demo type thing for everyone and see how many more will go over to the electronic.
KELPRO's go down the pricing?
For that program, yes.
Hey, for you guys using the new phone system yet?
It, no, they're gonna port on Tuesday.
We've been using it side by side on our, we're still good on the internet connection stays up. Cox cable, though, is kinda iffy on their service.
Um, the phones are up. I mean, if you had to direct numbers and extensions, they're, they're workable, but the port won't happen until Tuesday. I, I got an email this morning that, to set up all the auto, all that. I've got some questions, confusion on our side. But I think it's gonna work well. It's going to be very different to get used to.
Sure, sure.
We got delayed. The court system had to have a workaround. They weren't gonna allow the courts to do it. So, they actually had to bring in a separate internet connection just for the phones. So, that kinda pushed us out about a week while that was all being set up.
Cox internet? AT&amp;T's trying to have a, a presence, working on it here.
Well, with each fiber drops to one of the locations. We got that up there.
Fiber?
Yeah, you buy them at Red All Bar Forum. You're talking about Smiley Whips. I knew it was that. Everybody got tired.
We agree.
It's running away. Not my personal best, but...
So, that last one in is to get for the consent agenda.
That must be designed by you.
Well... No. Okay. Nothing else, anything? Let's figure it out. All right, move to approve consent agenda. I have a motion, I will second. I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? You're against it.
You're against it?
All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that's it, eh? All right, any citizens desiring to be heard? Okay, number eighteen comments, announcements, questions by Board of County Commissioners, County Officers, and Department heads. Sure, anything from you, sir?
No, just, you know, the biggest thing I have, we're dealing with is rescue calls. If people are going down roads, they probably shouldn't.
Yes, sir.
And getting stuck. I know we had, we had a emergency call yesterday. They just came out and had our guys in the stock, they had us on the stock. Everybody on the stack, we appreciate that.
That big old six-wheel drive, military deuce and a half will go places that y'all won't be in.
Yes, it will.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure we'll have a few more of those before we get a lull in somewhere.
It's, now that people know that's favorable, we expect and, and will respond to any other calls from emergency responders at, you know, throughout the county on that.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. Ma'am, anything from you? Thank you for getting the air turned over for us.
Oh, I'm not done yet.
Oh, we, we are. Today.
Y'all have no idea what it really takes.
We could, you had, we had no idea. All right, Molly, anything from you, sir?
Now, we're just down at the fairgrounds trying to get something that cleaned up. I know that wasn't for me.
It's wet.
It's wet, it's what it is.
We'll get through that, get through this and get back on roads.
Roger that. Thank you, sir. I did wanna report that our two-mile paving project, uh, out on Broadway, the two miles north of Waterbury Road, is complete. The contractor finished it yesterday. Can't lay asphalt when it's raining because it doesn't stick right and causes other issues. But finally quit raining long enough for them to complete that. We, we now need to strike that. And because of some of the funds that I'd like to use to do that, gentlemen, I need to ask y'all to come to maybe another meeting early next week to approve movements and money.
CBRI, if he would like, he's still got a balance in it on his, his, and it takes board action to make an encumbrance on that account.
Just let me know when. Okay, appreciate it. Any date that's bad for you next week?
Tuesday morning's bad for me, I gotta be...
I'm really kinda looking at Wednesday morning because of the timing, when I'm gonna have to call it. Monday's a holiday, so...
I think Wednesday's about right, because they can't strike it when it's raining either. And hopefully by Wednesday, so maybe some of this is slowed down.
And we're supposed to get more rain Tuesday.
Yeah.
So, I figure nine, we'll call it for nine o'clock Wednesday morning.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Anything else? All right, number nineteen, consideration of possible action on adjournment.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.